You ready, Larry?
Oh, Chuck up there.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Oh, Timmy, you can't hear me.
Hey.
Not cool. I don't like that.
Um, you guys want to have a good time here?
I don't mind. She smells good. I'll take a shower.
(laughing).
They only want the three, so they help.
Oh, this one, you know that microphone is kicking around about three. So I'm gonna put my water bottles down here, so I don't...
I'm gonna leave mine there.
All right, welcome, everyone. My name is Stephanie. I coordinated this event for all of the candidates to come and tell us about themselves. I would like to say that Lisa Torres was invited four times. The first invite, she blocked me completely off Facebook. Jack Barry, I did speak to this morning. He said he would be here. Something may have came up. Janet Goodson would not respond to her four invitations. Bobby O'Reilly told me he would be here, and then I lost contact with him, so I'm not entirely sure. But to me, empty seats speak volumes, so, um... You know how to vote. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming. I appreciate the candidates that did show up for participating in this event. We have to give a great big thank you to Purple Line Winery, George, Kate, and Scott. I do wanna say this. Their kitchen certified as open last week, and they are working with a chef on a menu. Stay tuned. They already applied for their cocktail and beer license. Awesome.
Great, great, girl.
We appreciate you. And I wanna thank Brett Johnson, who stopped by and got us all these microphones out of Howzer's Music, and Joe's Food Truck out front. He has amazing food. You gotta stop by there. And thank you to the guys who agreed to moderate for me. I have Jim Mall, Gerald Stokes, Larry Tracy, and representing our upcoming future is Trent Bosser, an Orville High School student. We're here to just get to... Wait, just a little more information about the candidates running for city council and see who may be best for the team for our city. We have a leader. We do not need people applying to be the leader. We need teamwork. We need people to apply to the team, and we need them all to get along. So with that being said, I'm gonna turn it over to Jim.
Great, thank you. A little bit about the format this evening. To start off, each candidate will be given three minutes for an opening statement. Each question that they will be answering tonight has been submitted by community members. Questions will be asked by the moderators here, one question at a time. We ask that you give us original answers in your own words, not piggyback off another's answer. We'd like to know your thoughts on the topic individually. Please be respectful of each other, and there will be a chance for the audience to meet with the candidates when we're finished tonight and ask some one-on-one questions, if the candidates are willing, and I'm betting they are. Yep, they are. So we'll start off with the first question. Will be asked by fellow moderator Gerald Stokes.
Are we doing the introduction?
I guess we should do that, shouldn't we?
It's hot. It's okay.
Yeah, it's okay. My fee for doing this is quite high, but I'm still willing to pay it. We'll start with Scott Thompson. Scott?
I think if we steal this one, my...
Oh, did I steal it?
That won't work.
Just like this last one, huh?
Yep.
Okay, they went away.
Turn it on.
Check.
Does this one reach me?
This thing? No. So... To give us all, all three of us, a little credit, first of all, thank you everybody for coming. We were told five minutes, so I will do my best to narrow it down to three. So first of all, thank you everybody for coming. It is an honor to be here, and it is an absolute honor to be sitting here with these two to my left. And I'm really looking forward to this election. I feel so much better about the city now than I did four years ago when I first ran. So with that, just to let you know, by myself, I am Scott Thompson. I'm currently the vice mayor of Orville. I'm also a husband of amazing wife who is sitting right here, Krista. We have two boys, Isaac and Ben. I'm a pastor of a local church, and I'm a previous business owner. So in my youth, for myself, I traveled quite a bit. In my youth, visited and lived in seven different nations. The reason why I bring that up is because I have such an interest in other cultures, other voices, other viewpoints, and I believe that's important, something I bring into city council as opposed to being intimidated by opposing views. Those opposing views actually intrigue me, as long as a person can explain to me why they think the way that they do and have a, you know, an objective discussion, so we can come to more of an understanding. I think that's missing a lot in our age. People, if we disagree, they try to slam each other and bash each other, and they're afraid of each other. Where I think the strength of America is in our diversity and coming to the table with different opinions and voices and listening. So why I'm running, well, after coming here, I began to look around and see, as far as the community, I had two boys. Haven't been here for a long time. I've actually been in Orville for six years now. But when I got here, I talked to a lot of business owners, and the unified voice was just a resounding complaint against the leadership here in Orville and just kind of the stifling nature of the city council holding businesses back, keeping them down. And I actually went down to city council and visited that, saw that firsthand, saw how there was kind of a disconnect between the city council. There was kind of an us versus them mentality. And so being a business owner, when I came into town, understanding how difficult it is to run a business in Orville, I believed that the council needed to have more of a representation of people who understand that and be an advocate. We gotta have businesses. We gotta have families in town, and so I wanted to bridge that gap, wanna build more relationship between the council and the city. Especially for, you know, looking at my boys, when they graduate high school, will there be jobs? Will there be opportunities here in Orville? Or will they have to leave this area in order to have a future for themselves? And so I'm working on council with the next generation in mind. So when I stepped on, I have four values, and I have 20 seconds left, so I'll go through those real quickly. That's family, business, public safety, and fiscal responsibility. I've held true to those last four years, and I will gather more, give you more information in my closing statement. But there is three minutes. Scott Thompson votes for council November 3rd. Thank you.
I was gonna say I would give you guys five minutes. There's only three of you.
Good evening. I'll find a comfortable spot to hold this, where the sound is approximately correct. Good evening. Thank you, Stephanie, for arranging this. Thank you, Kate and George, for hosting us. It's always a wonderful environment down here. I've been here for several events and always had a good time. I was just had a demotion party from my presidency of the local Rotary Club. Instead of having a party when you get promoted, they give you a party when you finally get to turn the duties over to someone else. I'm an avid golfer, so we played bocce golf. It's an interesting variation if you haven't played bocce or if you don't like golf. Have enough of their wonderful wine, you'll enjoy the experience of either one. I was born and raised here in Orville. I grew up here, going to schools in Orville, Gridley. I went to school in Orville every year of my life. I lived in five different states. My dad didn't like it here. He moved every summer since we got out of school, and as soon as it snowed, he said, "I'm going back to Orville." But this is home to me. I've lived all over the place. I've managed and owned restaurants in the Central Valley, Northern California, Southern Oregon, Middle Oregon. But this is home, so when I decided to come home, this is where I came. I met my wife at the Gridley Fair. We've been married for 37 years. One of my boys lives here now. He's working for the sheriff's office after 10 years in the Air Force. So this is home. This is why it's important for me to run here. The reason I ran was first out of anger at what the city council had done. And I'm not the kind of guy to sit back and just say, "Oh, well, not my problem." It is my problem. It is my community, and if you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem. I am part of the solution. After getting over the anger, I tried to figure out why those three people, that are good people that I've known most of my life, made this bad decision. And I decided it was because they didn't have the skills necessary to run a large business or corporation. I have those skills. I've owned my own business. I've been in management with the sheriff's office, ran a $19 million budget, had over 100 employees for 15 years. I have experience negotiating contracts. I have experience working with labor unions. I was head of my labor union, coached Little League. I was on the Little League board. So I'm involved in our community now. When I retired from the sheriff's office after 27 years, I decided that I wanted to give back to my community. So I looked at a lot of the local servantess organizations. I knew a lot of Rotarians, and I knew that there were two clubs. One met at 7:00 in the morning, one met at noon. I'm retired now. The only thing I get up that early for is golf, so I joined the noon club. What went to... I didn't have anything to do on Tuesdays. Went to a five-day-a-week thing for me now. The last couple of years, I've been really involved in campfire relief. I headed up our committee for the Orville Rotary Club. We just started a new one. We gave away $27,000 at the local assistance center to needy families. We're working with survivors from the Northern Complex, helping them. So I give back. I think the community's been wonderful to me. It's been wonderful to my family. And I think I'm happy to be in a position where I'm able to help and I have the skills I think will help. I admire what Chuck and Scott have done with the current leadership, and I think I have skills that will complement theirs and continue the forward progress. Thank you. My wife likes it.
Thank you, guys. I'm Chrissy Riggs. And of course, I also want to extend a sincere thank you to George and Kate and to Stephanie and to our moderators for being here tonight and putting on the only in-person Canada event. So I'm also particularly thankful because the three of us had a meet-and-greet scheduled for earlier this week, but, you know, chaos occurs in our community, and we had to cancel that. So I'm happy that we all get to sit together and share our ideas for our community. So I grew up in Orville, actually outside of the city limits. And very early on, I chose to really invest my skills, energy, and time into our community. I've served for nine years as the executive director of The Axium, a nonprofit working with at-risk youth, helping them overcome the cycle of poverty and the trajectory that so many of their lives were previously on. We support them and encourage them to become engaged citizens that are giving back to our community and that invest in our community long-term. I'm also the chairperson of the City of Orville Parks Commission. I got on that because, like Brian, I was pretty angry about the way our city was, especially with our parks. I love recreation. I love our outdoor spaces. And so instead of jumping on the bus to complain, which would have been a lot easier, I decided I'd jump onto the Parks Commission and work to support our Parks Department and our docents, our museum docents. As part of my role with The Axium, I started working closely with the Downtown Business Association. Through that, I've now become the treasurer of the Downtown Business Association. We work to revitalize a historic downtown, put on marketing events and activities campaigns in order to help our businesses thrive and attract new businesses. So in my spare time, which is limited, but it exists every now and then, I really enjoy hosting trivia night at the Exchange, playing bocce on these courts, but I'm wildly competitive. And then I also, of course, enjoy our lake, fishing with my husband. He fishes, and I mostly read. Sometimes I catch the big fish, though. I know. And then more importantly, I really like events, putting on events that bring our community members together. So I've hosted a lot of service events, downtown cleanups, park cleanups. And really, my goal there is to help people become more invested and more closely connected to our community, whether that be through getting to know their neighbors or through serving and seeing the impact that small differences can make. So in those and in all of my other leadership roles, one thing that really stands out to me is our dedicated community members and our leadership team. So when I was considering running for council, actually a few years ago, even Scott said, "When are you gonna run?" And I was like, "Oh, I'm too young. I don't want to yet." But as time evolved and as I got to see Chuck and our current council member and our current leadership team really changed the path of Orville, I saw that as a really good indication, a good team that I could jump on and that I totally respect and that I could help add a little, a little different perspective and bring a little bit more energy in life. Not that they don't have enough. They would do it perfectly fine without me. But I do believe that having a broad perspective is something really valuable for our community and also having respectful relationships with our council. So that's something that's started to cultivate, something I hope to continue to see in our leadership. So I really believe that we're on the right track, and I applaud the advances of our council. I wanna help in continuing that progress. Thanks, Stephanie.
And we'll begin the questioning now with Gerald Stokes.
So one second, Gerald. If there's specific questions and there are names by them, if those that did not attend or not here, just go ahead and ask it to the one person that... I mean, it's self-explanatory, but I just wanna make sure.
Okay, but I've already crossed them all off my list, so I may need another list.
Oh, ask them whatever you want.
How many minutes we have for response?
Two.
Okay, I have a question here, and all three of you will be answering this question. Let's start with... Can I use your first names? Okay, good. Let's start with Chrissy, okay? In your own words, what do you feel your role would be as a city council member?
I think my primary role as a council member would be to provide, to be an advocate for our businesses and for our younger families. So I know that my generation is part of the generation that's looking for where we're going to set roots, where we're gonna invest our entire futures in. So I feel I'm a pretty good advocate for that population. And then also, because of my really great relationships with a multitude of small business owners in our town, being able to advocate for them. And then lastly, my relationships with the Parks Department and our public works, they're like the foundation. They work behind the scenes to really make, help make our city run smoothly. I hope that we can, if on council, I could advocate for them and help expand their services to improve quality of life for our town.
All right, thank you very much. I'm allowed to ask follow-up questions on that a little bit? I'm just gonna ask a follow-up.
That's one by me.
Yes, yes, yes.
I'm just curious, when you say advocate for local businesses, can you tell me what that means more specifically?
Yeah, so as the treasurer of the Downtown Business Association, sometimes there's difficulties working and bringing, uniting community members, business owners, and our various service organizations. I've worked really hard to help bridge those relationships, build better relationships amongst the different key players. And I think that being on council will allow that to have a better unified voice.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Brian, do you need me to read the question over? You got it?
Would you please?
Sure. In your own words, what do you feel your role would be as a city council member?
Well, I think all of our role is to represent the constituency. And right now, we haven't done the districting thing, so I think we're all responsible to every citizen. I think I have a unique perspective on that because I've been... When I was born, raised here, going to school, I was in a lower economic echelon and then middle-class working family. And now that I'm retired, I feel like I've kind of went the whole gamut. I think my leadership skills, my experience in management of a large budget and a large group of people will be helpful to the team. I think I would be... There's a lot of committees and a lot of meetings and things that we have to go to. I think it would help to be in my position where I don't have to go to work, so maybe I can fill in those gaps where someone else may have to attend to their business or their economic income to, and fulfill the role of the council. My only goal is to fulfill my role to the council. I think I can represent everyone, and that's gonna be my goal. Make sure we stay on track. I'm really goal-oriented, so I would like to see us set some goals for the next two years, the next four years, maybe have a 10-year plan with the city. And I'm very good at accomplishing goals and staying on track. So I think I could bring that to the team and help keep us focused on our goals.
All right, thank you very much. Scott, would you like me to reread it?
Nah, I got it. So I was... I was laughing to myself, 'cause I'd love to say I'd like to be the local jester for council. But in all seriousness, one of my strengths is futuristic and visionary, and I can answer, you know, some of the exact same things. I think there is a desire that we all have, which I think is so good. I'm so encouraged by some of the change that's been happening in Orville. But I believe that as city leaders, there has to be that strength of vision, being visionary for the future of our town. And that is one of my just inherent strengths, is having that, just that's the way I think. You know, what is, what's Orville gonna look like in 10 years from now? Who are we going to prioritize between here and there? And as we all know, you guys are all here because you love Orville. We love Orville. And I think for the most part, all of us and you here as well just feel like Orville really has been undermarkeded and mismanaged for a long time. You know, if you think, we don't, a lot of cities have to reinvent their history. You know, I actually lived in Sonoma for a while. We know it now as like wine country, but that's not what it was. They had to reinvent themselves to be wine country. Whereas Orville, we have such a rich history. And it's again, just the mismanagement and coming to the table and being like, "Okay, that's not who..." What we've seen for the last 40 years really is not who Orville is. And so having that clear direction of, "Okay, what is Orville and what is the direction of Orville?" And I see, I see a town that in the midst of California is a safe bubble for businesses and families. You know, California's kind of going in a certain direction, and we see what's happening in a lot of big states in California. And I'm really encouraged by even the last census that came out through our chamber, which shows a lot of cities, even local cities around us, their market's going down and Orville's been going up. And, you know, Orville is that. Orville is that. Whereas we've had such a bad reputation for a long time, but there is such beauty here. Orville is an amazing place. It's a place for now, it's becoming and will continue to become as long as you guys select the right people in place, but continue to be a great place for families to raise their kids, for businesses to come, even startup businesses to be here. You know, there's so much potential. We all see the potential. But you've gotta have the right people in place in leadership, so it doesn't stifle, push back, pushed out. But there is that relationship between the private and public sector. And definitely, that's what I've been working towards, and if re-elected, that's what I'll continue working to, too, is being the, being that voice and being, having that vision and keep moving forward in that direction. So that's my answer.
Time.
Do you gentlemen have a follow-up question on that one? All right, well, our next question is coming from a local business owner, Larry Tracy. Scott, this question is to you. It's a two-part question. Number one, do you think that complaints that drive the defund police movement are valid? And number two, what's your position on defunding the police?
That's an easy answer. Uh, no. Very, I will not mince words with that. In a culture that looks to minimize even take power from our law enforcement, I definitely am on the other side of the spectrum. So it's, it's important to have the checks and balances, you know. Sadly, there, there does need to be a continual cleaning up of those in our law enforcement who misrepresent the entirety of law enforcement. Are there bad cops? Of course there are. But does that mean we should defund all the cops? That's a ludicrous idea. You know, I think that it's sad even now. I think the complaints that we have from our community stem from the fact that the police officers don't have the resources to take care of the problems that we have in our community. So taking away more power from them is going in the opposite direction. So I, I think that it'd be great to have actually more tools and resources for our police officers to actually take care of the issues. Not one demographic, but take care of the issues in town. And with that, you know, part of something I've done recently now with the Measure U passing and having a little more funds with our city, not just a little, a lot more funds with our city, but the development of the pop team that I was a part of, the problem-oriented policing, which I'm really proud of. And that team is formed up of different jurisdictions here in town, different departments. And they are, they have been given direction by the city council to go after that. They don't respond to calls. They specifically go after those individuals in town who are causing problems, whether they're homeless or not, but those individuals in town who repeatedly cause problems, making it very, at least, very uncomfortable for them to be in town. So I would love to give our police officers more, more resources and not just to have a cyclical, you know, in-and-out cycle, but actually to actually take care of problems, so that we can prioritize, you know, our families and businesses. You know, I think that there has to be a place where we, we say, you know, we wanna be compassionate towards citizens in our community who are down and out or have needs. We wanna be compassionate, but we've gotta, we gotta prioritize families. We gotta prioritize businesses, because without, you know, businesses, you know, where are you gonna get tax revenue? Where are you gonna get police department? Where are you gonna get your streets cleaned up and paved and all that? If families aren't gonna be here, if they don't feel safe, then families are gonna move out. So what do you have then? You just have more blighted buildings. You have more blighted communities, and it just continues the cycle of going down. So I see defunding the police moves in that direction, whereas empowering, enforcing, and encouraging standing behind our police officers continues to promote a city that is beautiful and safe for everybody.
Thank you, Scott. That was a good answer. I'd like to pass the microphone to Trenton for the next question.
We agree. I agree. No piggyback.
I have a question for Chrissy. How do you feel your seat on the city council will benefit the future for the teens growing up in Orville?
That's a great question. So as I mentioned earlier, I'm the director of The Axium Youth Center. And what I've experienced with many of our students, pre-COVID, we'd have on average 45 to 55 students an afternoon. And what I've experienced with those teens and with many teens throughout my nine years working with youth in Orville is that they experience a level of hopelessness that's really unfortunate and that they also have a perception that Orville is, as they refer to it, as a trap town and that their primary goal should be to get out of Orville. And I've worked diligently to change the culture of youth into beginning to believe that Orville is a place for them, for their future, and for a place for them where they can be successful and where they can have opportunities. So I hope that as a member of council, I could continue to advocate for opportunities for prevention and early intervention for our students or our young people. And I also hope that I can uplift some of them to be encouraged to become civic-minded and engaged. I actually have one junior high student who is really kind, the smartest little guy, and he actually watched our debate the other day, our forum the other day. And I think he's probably the youngest viewer, I'd assume. And I often refer to him as my campaign advisor, 'cause he gives great, he says it exactly how it is. So I hope that I can encourage young people to take a, you know, take an active role in making our community a great place to live. I think Jim has a follow-up question.
So this one, this question is going to each of you. We'll start with Brian on this, your first major order of business if you're elected to the council.
Not stumble during the swearing-in ceremony? I think my first order of business would be to introduce myself to the staff that don't know who I am. Kind of do a little informal survey, if you will, of what the staff think the needs are, what we can do to give the staff the ability to do their job. As Scott said, we're visionaries. That should be your job as the chief executive or the leadership of the community or any business. The top person's job is to have the vision, and the people under that job is to accomplish that vision. Second to that, our job is to make sure they have the tools and the resources to accomplish that vision that we gave them. I wanna make sure they have a clear understanding of what our vision is, and I wanna have a clear understanding of what their needs are to accomplish that. I am familiar with a lot of the things that they might need or want or need to do their job, but I've never worked for a city, and I haven't worked with any of these people, nothing or what their skillset is. I've worked with a lot of them. I have an idea of what I see from the outside, but often that's not the true scenario. So I think my first order of business would be to make myself known to them, let them know what my expectations are, and ask them what their needs and wants are, so they can accomplish our goal. And then second to that, I think, what I talked about, I really would like to see us set some goals. I think if we don't set goals of what we wanna do and where we wanna be... I think if we don't set goals of what we want to do and where we want to be, uh we're not gonna get there. We're just wandering around the back. I think we have a uh and again, I don't know because I'm not on the inside at this point. Uh but I think we're making progress towards a goal. I'm not sure if we have a clear establishment other than making Orville more friendly to business, making Orville safer. Uh but I think we need to establish a clear goals and a clear path to arrive at those goals with the resources that we have.
Scott, the uh question would be your first major order of business if you're reelected.
Um something that was going on right now that will all continue and uh in regard to that is our staff, again, uh being that the city had the measure you had passed a year and a half ago, there's still a lot of um rebuilding of things that were stripped. And um there's still changes, a lot of stuff that, you know, a lot of stuff in regards to that, that is important and integral. Uh in regards to our our building department, our code department, even our our fire and police department, getting those things. And that's kind of the this the rock of the the foundation of getting things more successful still here. Um business owners talk about the or contractors talk about the the delay and some of the attitude when they come in and they request permits. So um that's something that needs to be fixed and that is a is a priority of mine. Um also, something that's really hot, I believe, right now and is important for us to fan the flame uh right now is uh what's going on downtown. And it's good, you know, last night, my wife and I ate at the Union downtown and it was a forty-five minute wait and that was exciting. I would, when I got, when I told it was forty-five minute wait, I was like, that's awesome. You know, just the the change and the shift of culture that's happening downtown. And I believe that as a city and as city leaders, that is something that we should come in behind and do the best we can to fan that flame. Because um I I'm pretty positive that every one of you loves our downtown. And we love all of Orville, just like we said, we're here to represent all of Orville, but I believe that you got to make sure the heart is clean and bumping strong. And then from there, you know, you can be more effective in reaching the outskirts and all the different demographics and representative groups that are in town. But we got to have a strong heart and I see that that happening. And so it's important for us to um continue to make sure that to move forward in that direction.
Chrissy?
Thank you. Um I would say that the first order of business for me is something that I've started to do. Uh but as if elected, something I could do a little more of and will be doing a little bit more of, and that's building trusting and meaningful relationships with the other council members, the council members that are elected and with staff. Um I know that we won't always agree on everything. If we did, there would be an issue. And so I want to ensure that any team that I enter into, I have a trusting relationship with the individuals first so that we can really work together to bring out the best for our community. So it's gonna for me start with building better relationships with council members, establishing trust and also with staff. Our staff is um pretty tired. They've been beaten up a little bit. So I really hope that I can bring a um encouragement and some motivation to them uh through just very normal, natural things, stopping by with coffee and donuts, saying hello, just encouraging them in the small ways. It really shows that they're valued and they're appreciated and that the work they're doing matters and that we notice it. So um for me, it's people first. That's where I'll be jumping into. And then um in that, looking at the leadership qualities that we have, the unique strengths that we all have and where my leadership qualities and strengths fit into best.
Thank you, Jim. All right, Brian, you're gonna get this one first. We'll have all three of you answer the question so you can prepare your comment. Do you support a needle exchange program and why?
No, and because it encourages crime. I don't think I need two minutes to answer that. I think everybody understands that. Uh first place, it's everyone I've ever seen is not an exchange program. In exchange, you give something, you get it back before you get another one. This is a giveaway program, the ones that I've seen. They don't give them back. And I don't think giving needles to drug addicts uh is going to stop them from being drug addicts. And that should be our goal. Uh I'm not a big fan of methadone clinics. You have a heroin addict, all you're doing is supplanting his addiction when he doesn't have the money or the opportunity to gain some capital to purchase more drugs. So you give them to him for free. Um I'm all about giving people the tools they need to succeed, not to continue their downward spiral and their criminal behavior. So I I am not in favor of it and that is why.
I'm shocked by that answer. Scott, go ahead.
Allowed and resounding ditto. I know we're not supposed to copy each other's words, but um but yeah, I'm I'm on the exact opposite polar end of programs like Needle Exchange for the amazing answer that Brian gave, you know, it it that when it was going, when uh you know, it first came to Chico, uh I was a voice against it as well, even out out there because that those needles do end up coming to Orville. And um I I manage property at our church. We have ten acres and I've had to clean up um encampments. And with that, it's it is nerve wracking because there's needles strung out all throughout, you know, the trash that's in there. And that's dangerous for anybody that's having to clean that up. And so just experiencing that firsthand, wanting more needles, just put out into the community, yeah, makes my skin call. No, thank you.
Chrissy, do you have a different perspective?
I don't have a different perspective. I do absolutely um applaud our council for banning such programs in our community. I would continue to support banning such programs in our town. Uh apparently, I do look like somebody who's on the news often advocating for them. And um a few people have got me confused with her. So I do not support needle exchange programs or the like of such programs. Um and actually, I'm a little fired up about the fact that I look like somebody who does, but so, no, I don't. Uh absolutely not. If I could curse, it would be an H E double hockey sticks. No.
Thank you for your answer. Larry, it's your turn.
Well, this is kind of a subject that's near and dear to my heart. Um I currently run three businesses in the city of Orville. I moved an electronics company from Silicon Valley to Folsom in nineteen ninety and had a payroll of eleven million dollars a year. So what are your detailed plans to attract new companies that pay a livable wage to Orville? I'd like to ask you to read that question. We'll start with Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Tracy. First of all, I believe as a city council, the the relational build and repairing between the s- staff and our council and businesses, it's got to start there because if you have your business here and you're not happy, you've got friends, you've got businesses. So the if you have a restaurant or a business, your best way to see that business grow is to keep your current clients happy. If your current clients are happy, you can recruit all you want, but you're gonna have a cyclical cycle of people coming in and and going out. So um that is one of the first reasons why I stepped up to council was building the bridge. You know, there's been opportunities since I've been on there um for, when businesses come in, I'll I'll give you a small example. When the Bulldog Taqueria wanted to come on the roundabout there by the Green Bridge, uh just the the idea of them coming, it was it was strange for me, even at that time, when there was kickback from the council and fear of traffic and fear of their, you know, ingress and egress. And there was there was a lot of just questions and pushback towards them of, you know, well, you're just gonna, this is gonna happen and that's gonna happen. And uh the gentleman was very clear on, no, we've we've addressed this, as we know our business. And I'm just kind of listening to this pushback of this guy who wants to open this business on this corner that's been a blight for I don't know how many decades, that corner just looked torn up. And so I spoke up very strongly in his favor and was like, this guy is risking for our community. He's his risk, it's his permit, his use permit to have that. And so if there's issues, obviously, we know, he knows that this is a city we could pull. His use permit and all these things that can happen, it's all his risk. So I'm very much in favor of being the advocate to see businesses move forward and come and be happy. So building a relationship for me is is integral and having that good relationship and being that voice for businesses to come to town. And then from the second part of that, one thing that I look for in staff is um is their their ability to be able to talk to business owners. I would love for our city, you know, there's these conferences that big cities go to and city representatives, whether it be the mayor or um, you know, city administrator, being able to go to different conferences and these big companies being a voice and say, hey, come to Orville. Our real estate here is is still relatively affordable. You know, we have a workforce here, when the business isn't, when the government isn't paying for them to stay home because of COVID. But um being that advocate in these conferences like that, you know, where we haven't, uh there's been a lot of resistance from certain council members for a long time to even allow a representative from Orville to go to these uh conferences and communicate to these larger companies to come here. Because even, you know, in Thermoledo or whether it be in our industrial region, we have land, we have warehouses, we have a spot where, you know, a a tech company or some industry, whether it be, you know, mills, I mean, we just got all this lumber. There's a lot of things that could happen, you know, an opening of a new mill. Um and so again, first point is uh fixing the relationship and establishing better better relationships with current businesses. And then from there, hiring staff and then being able to go to uh go to conferences where we can talk to business owners of these companies to bring them into town. And one thing I'm grateful for, some of the staff we brought in, one of the uh hiring points for me is their relationships that are regional with businesses that they've come to town. For example, Tom Lando, I hope whoever's in council that we continue to have that guy in town because um you know, he was the city administrator for Chico for a long time. And he has relationship with businesses in Chico, which by the way, some of them are not happy because of the direction of Chico. So having somebody like that in town and having, for me, that was a key point in in hiring and having stay on. Because of those relationships, I'm not just hiring his skill, I'm hiring his relationships with those businesses to advocate for them to come to town and he's constantly in contact and trying to coax them. If they're not happy there, hey, listen, we will work with you here. And so um those are some of my strategies I've been working on and I would and the the um going to conferences thing that hasn't quite um taken off yet, but I would love to see more council that is in support of uh investing in those type of events so that we can bring some of those tech companies to town.
Thank you, Scott. Brian, question's now yours.
It's interesting. There's a, there's a lot of things we could do to attract more businesses. Um some of those things, I think first, a lot of times we end up, not just we, I mean, citizens, people of the United States, uh not just in Orville, but we tend to cut our nose off to spite our face. Uh I think if we look at the long term view of things instead of the short term view, we look at getting some new business to come into town and we charge them all these fees and permits and all these things to get them to come in our community and make it burdensome for them, especially if you don't have a lot of capital outlay in the beginning, but we don't look at the long term picture. If we could attract a a warehouse, uh manufacturing, uh assembly, some kind of labor type industry uh that doesn't require a secondary education to be an employee there and and offered them benefits to get them in the door and get them to build here, the city would profit from having all those citizens that they make tax paying employees and we would get the taxes from the income from those businesses. So I would like to see us make it as cheap as we could without costing the city money to do it. But look at the long term picture instead of the cost of doing the business to begin with. We can offset some of that through depreciation of having that business in town for thirty or forty or fifty years. Uh I think it's incumbent upon us to offer jobs to our youth. As Chrissy said, and I think Scott said, it's Orville, we don't want to be a trapped community. We want to have opportunities for our youth. If we don't encourage businesses to come here, we won't have youth here. And a lot of the new ideas that the the ways businesses grow are through new ideas. And a lot of those new ideas come from uh the young men and women of our community. So I think it's important that we try to attract them, make the city pretty, uh you know, make it beautiful to look at, but also economically beneficial for working class employment opportunities uh for our citizens.
Thank you. Um so I absolutely agree with what the two gentlemen next to me said. I do have a few other uh items that I'd like to add to it. First, that since two thousand and fourteen, Orville's invested heavily in economic development. Last year, we spent two point four million dollars on economic economic development, whereas Marysville spent eight hundred thousand and Red Bluff spent seven thousand five hundred dollars. So we, and that's not just last year, it's actually since two thousand and fourteen, Orville spent about two hundred and fifty percent more than neighboring communities on economic develop- development. So we're getting there. Uh there's a few roadblocks that happen when new businesses want to come to town. And part of that is the need to improve our public utilities, our sewer treatment plant, uh and also our internet or broadband. So I think that we need to uh really tackle those two issues so that when a business decides that they might be interested in Orville, we could say, we're ready for you to build on day one. You guys are good to go. Let's get um, let's get you guys in here. The other considering uh thing that I would consider is housing in the um middle income, upper income area. So housing is a huge shortage across all incomes in our community. One of the things that really bothers me is that um although Orville Hospital is a great economic driver for our community, many of their doctors or upper physicians won't live in this community. Instead, they bus them in, which does allow for them to do some paperwork on the bus ride. But I would love to see our housing and our lifestyle be able to offer um an attractive environment for upper middle and um all income streams. So I want to see us really make progress in those areas. Lastly, one of the things that I'm planning on doing in the next uh six months as part of my education for my master's degree is creating an economic or business profile. Uh so surveying what businesses our community members want to see and what businesses are really create anchor points throughout our town to drive further economic uh development. So that's something that I'll be working on and if elected, it'd be a lot easier. But either way, it's something that is uh, I know our chamber has done similar studies and um a lot of out of town people do similar studies, but I just want to really get to know what what do we need here based on our current population and what is proven to drive economic success.
Thanks, Chrissy. I'll pass the microphone to Trenton for the next question.
Will you strive to have on the job training for high school students such as trade school options that teach work ethics? This goes to Scott.
Yes, uh I think there's this mindset across the board that if you, unless you go to college and you get a white collar job, that uh you're less than, if you go to trade school and somehow that you couldn't make it um in California, um universities and whatnot. I think it, there's a lot of information that's actually coming out that's advocating for trade schools and the importance and the need, the jobs that are there and regarding uh all sorts of blue collar uh trade jobs. And um we definitely, I believe, have a, we have that capacity. Not only we have the capacity, we have the the place, but also if we inspire hope for the next generation, for guys just like you to um to step up and know that, hey, listen, there is a future for you in Orville. There's a future education for you here and you can get trained. And uh whether you you're sent out from here or whether you uh find a job here in town, there's um there's opportunity for you. So with that, um I am really glad that we have uh, you know, Bud Tracy brought in the Lyman College here and they are doing, you know, the trade schooling for not only, not only the um the pole workers, the line workers, but also there's more, um they want to expand that as well and doing some other, I believe, big equipment uh training and whatnot. So I'm really glad that they're here in town and making sure that they're happy and seeing others like that come to town. So um definitely, yeah, that's a, that's a great opportunity for the next generation.
The same question's also for Brian.
It's interesting and I I know Chuck talked about this early on. Uh I think it's important that we have those apprenticeship programs if you can. But those are fairly expensive and usually don't happen unless you have some federal money uh available for those types of programs. Uh when I was working at the sheriff's office back when AB one oh nine first passed and they gave us all those state prisoners and said, they're gonna be released into your community. You have a vested interest in making sure that they succeed. So one of my tasks from the sheriff was to find some way to educate these people, to make them employable. Well, the first thing I found out was they didn't even know how to be employees to begin with, so you have to teach them those skills first. Uh but then secondly, uh there weren't a lot of opportunities for them. So we were looking at maybe building some kind of a program at the sheriff's office where we could teach people those skills. Uh I don't think the city of Orville has the wherewithal to do that. I'd like to see us encourage that. I know when we were trying to build a new jail, uh there's certifications from the labor unions that you have to be um a journeyman to work on these things and they have to hire a a journeyman to work on these things and they have to hire a specific number of employees locally. Well, we didn't have enough local people that had that experience. So then we had to pay higher costs because we had to pay a per diem to get those employees to be brought from outside our community to live in. It's nice while they're here because they're contributing while they're building it, but they don't live here and this isn't their home and they're leaving as soon as it's over. So I'd like to see those things available. I don't know that we have the opportunity. I would encourage the types of places that we do have uh, that could use some help if we could subsidize it in some way, but I think that's gonna be incumbent upon us to encourage state and federal government to make those grants available and do some research, see that they are, are things that are available that we can make those programs available. I do think they're important and I'd love to see Orville do it. I just think we're gonna have to find some outside money to make it effective.
Chrissy.
Thank you. Um, yes, of course. I um, I'm actually currently working on this, have been working on this and uh, in addition, many of our other youth organizations work on that as well. So Boys and Girls Club has a leadership and training program, The Live Spot, another youth center in town has what's called the Action Team. Uh, and all of those along with Axiom are working towards building opportunities for students to gain the education and the guidance mentorship in order to enter into the workforce. Um, upper education is not for everybody and there are very good jobs uh, even without upper education. So I encourage all people to really look at what is it they wanna do early on? And then begin to test that field out before they start even trying to go to college for it. So uh, unfortunately, many people my generation went to school for one thing and then got out, got into the field and worked a year and realized that they hate what they just spent a ton of money and got a bunch of loans to do. Uh, I wanna help our young people avoid that by offering them early education in um, throughout our community. One of the ways we've been successful with that at Axiom is connecting students with mentorships uh, and with apprentice programs or internships at various businesses. And I've uh, been really encouraged to see young people grow their skills and their capabilities through those things. So I'd love to see more of that. I'm a, I know that the um, ROP or like the kinda education, uh, job education training within the high schools has been um, reduced significantly. I'd like to see our district re- um, reinvest in those things as well.
If I can have a follow-up, follow-up answer as well, if you don't mind, just get things out of, out of the norm. But just to talk frankly, part of the problem that we have going on right now is incentivizing uh, unemployment. There is a lot of that happening right now, I know. Even just my relationship with Chuck, you know, just told me the other day that there's jobs, he'll train them. You're willing to work? And uh, we have a lot of issues right now with people, whether they're young or old, people are, you know, there's a lot of handouts right now from the government. Especially during COVID and uh, I, we actually at our church recently had the parking lot paved. And um, the owner of the business was just telling me how frustrated he was with uh, the government right now because they've incentivized his employees to not work and so how many it was like pulling teeth just to get them to show up because they're making so much money right now, just by staying home. So that's, that's as well, just, I know that goes beyond, that's a state-level thing. So you know, talk to your state reps and I know we have great local state reps, but you know, having um, some of that change in our community. So it changed in our state, but um, but locally, you know, we do have a lot of great opportunities in town right now for people to be trained. Uh, can we have, offer more opportunities for people to be trained? Absolutely. Uh, but currently, from my understanding right now, there are opportunities to be trained, there just aren't people, that many people that are willing actually to step up and undergo that training. So just saying.
Can I share a story to piggyback off of that? None of you guys are shaking your head vigorously, no, so I'm going to. We actually had a um, young person who had applied for a job and was offered a job and when he went to get his work permit signed by his mother, his mother said, I'm not gonna sign this because it's gonna reduce my um, my income through welfare. And after so that kind of mindset has been instilled in him and in his brothers and sisters. After negotiating sensitively why it's a benefit for this young man to instead get a job and learn skills, um, she ended up signing it and he's worked, this was gosh, six or seven years ago. He's worked ever since and is now married and starting a family in this community. So I totally agree with what Scott's saying. We have a mindset and a culture that says, sometimes let's try to do as the least amount and get the most out of it. Uh, and we have to work with our young people to really change that mindset, change that statistic and that um, that culture, that idea. Thanks Scott.
Brian, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I do, but I feel like I'm beating a dead horse. Uh, more, part of it, I'm listening to what they're talking about and I think part of it might just be marketing. You know, maybe we're just not, people can't see the end of the tunnel or they see that light and think it's a train coming at them, but uh, it's interesting, my wife's a realtor and, and we see people, when I bought my first house, um, I told the realtor I could afford forty thousand dollars. And I have realtors show me sixty and seventy thousand dollar houses and I said, listen to me. I can't afford that. I need, this is what I can afford. And now we see people buying their first home and they want what mom and dad have and they think that, you know, that's their expectation. So when I first started working, I had a minimum wage job and I'm not the oldest guy in the room, but I was only making a dollar, it was either a dollar sixty-five or a dollar ninety-five an hour when I started working right around the corner over here at Sambo's. My brother-in-law called me and said, hey, you want a job? And I said, I'd love one. So I didn't even ask how much it paid, I didn't care, I was getting a job. I in two years, I'm gonna have a car and I'm gonna need some money. So I, I took the job, but, but I think it was a dollar sixty-five an hour. I was real excited because I saw in the break room, I went in there exhausted after my first four hours of work and I saw this federal government thing and they said in January first, you're gonna start making a dollar ninety-five and in June or March, you're gonna make two fifteen and two thirty-five and, and within a year, I'm gonna make two sixty-five an hour. I'm like, sweet, that's good money. Gas was like sixty-something cents a gallon, but I was excited about that. But you, our youth now don't see the benefit of learning those job skills and I think that's our responsibility, not as a city, as citizens, as parents, it's our responsibility to show them the value of an entry-level job and make them understand the value of an entry-level home. You buy this, you can work your way up through equity and things. And I don't think we're doing a good job of marketing that to our youth. So there, there are jobs out there. Everybody says they can't find a job, look in any business, they're all now hiring, they all have jobs available. But no one wants an entry-level job. They want to be the guy telling people what to do, not the guy doing the things he's told to do. So I think that's incumbent upon uh, us as citizens, not city council or city leaders, that's on, coming upon us as parents. My boys learned that, my boys had jobs when they were younger and uh, learned the value of a dollar and they're great tax-paying citizens now. So uh, anyway, that's where I'm at on that.
Next question, uh, I'll ask to all three. What's your approach to dealing with the homeless population in Orville? We'll start with Chrissy.
I hate this question. And here's why. Um, none of us have the magic wands to fix homelessness. And um, and I feel like during campaigning, you're supposed to have all of the magic wands. I don't. Um, I, it must've been lost in the mail. So for me, I operate on the principle that, a few different principles. And the first is that you can't help people more than they wanna be helped. This is something I've learned the hard way, working with teenagers. Uh, if somebody isn't willing to put in the work, then they're, they're not going to. And so we could spin our wheels in the mud trying to help somebody. But if they're not willing to put in just as much more effort than we are, then we won't make progress. So I really believe that we are um, responsible to our families and our business owners who are um, adding to the economy and adding to the community. And so my approach with dealing with the homeless is yes, supporting the ones who do want support through the sober living environments, through the resources that we already offer, connecting them and providing case management for those that want and are willing to put in the work. Um, but for those that aren't, who are really choosing this lifestyle and aren't willing to or don't have the capacity to make positive life changes. Um, then we need to make policies, we need to implement strategies that improve um, the uncomfortability, ability, it is. I hate saying it because it sounds so awful. But honestly, we need to improve lighting, that's what we've done downtown and it's helped. We need to improve sightlines in our public spaces. The goats are doing a great job at that. And um, we need to continue to invest in patrol and in um, connecting people to the resources that they need when they are in crisis. So, that's a tricky question. I'm not the expert, but I am absolutely willing to sit down with any experts and hear what's worked in other communities and really use uh, evidence-based practices for Orville instead of just seeing what might help and going for it. No, I wanna use evidence-based uh, policies, evidence-based practices.
I think first we need to admit that there's no solution. There, there's nothing we can do to solve this problem. So we need to take steps to mitigate it to the best of our ability. Uh, I think there are a lot of people out there who need help. Um, they may not even know that they want help, but they do. So you need to establish a relationship with those people, get them into a place where they trust you and believe that you have their best interests at heart in order to get them in a position. Uh, in, in my twenty-seven years of working in our county jail, I saw a lot of mentally ill people and it almost felt like I was a zookeeper sometimes because they were barely human. Um, they didn't know how to wear clothes or eat or dress themselves or clean themselves. Um, because they were mentally ill and were not on the proper medication. So I think we need to be able to identify those people. And there's some training that's available for law enforcement to help them identify, separate the wheat from the chaff, if you will, those that want help, those who need help and those who don't want it, whether they need it or not, but they've made that decision. So I would like to see us help those people. I'd like to see us bring in some federal dollars, some county dollars, get mental health involved in it. It's kind of the, the way the pendulum has swung the last five or ten years. Um, when we were building that jail, uh, we got the money because we're adding fifty-eight mental health beds. Um, they didn't care that we were replacing ninety-six female beds that were, I used to describe as an old zoo and a new zoo. Remember when you used to go to zoo when you were a kid? Maybe not you, but some of us. They were concrete pads with cyclone fence and they had an animal in it. Uh, he may have had a tire to play with or a rock to climb on. But now you go to them and they have creeks and trees and grass and it's different. Well, so we were trying to get rid of the old zoo and and build something more equitable for the female prisoners in our jail because they were living in a nineteen sixty-four bed. No one was interested in getting them out of that nineteen sixty-four facility, they were interested in getting help to the mentally ill. So we did build ninety-six new beds, but we also were building fifty-two mental health beds. And that's where the money's at. So I would, instead of defunding the police, let's bring in some experts in the field to help our police officers. There's training available, I went to a lot of it. Um, but there are experts out there that spend more time and have a better ability to make that connection, to build that trust faster with those people. So I'd like to see us bring in a multi-jurisdictional, not just Orville, not just the pop team. I'd like to see them get some county people and some state people because it's not gonna solve the problem for Orville if we push them all out to the county. Because they're still gonna come back in here and commit their crimes and do their business. So bring in the outside dollars to help identify the people that need help. Soon as you get them on medication and stabilized, they don't wanna live like that anymore, they wanna live like we do. Um, so there's opportunities out there, there's lots of SLEs in our community that do a lot of things to teach them skills about uh, giving back to your community and some basic employment skills, uh, but mostly teaching them some self-respect. So there, there's ample opportunity out there if we can pluck them out of that environment and put them into this environment. Uh, the other people, there are some things we can do. I hate that I see them taking care of their bodily functions in a way that affect our businesses. Um, the city put in for a grant to buy these Portland loos. There were three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for six toilets. That, that's like buying the screwdriver for the space shuttle, uh, you know, how can it cost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build six toilets? But it does in this world when you have to pay prevailing wage or, you know, we charge for the hookup to the uh, sewer system or those type of things. So there's things we can do. I'd like to see us build some toilets that are accessible to these people so they don't tear up the ones that we have. We can't use our parks because we lock all the bathrooms, so mama can take your baby to play on the rotary park on the slide for a minute, an hour, two hours, but a child has to go potty and the toilets are locked. So then they have to end that experience and go home. So if we can make opportunities for them to use the toilet and really discourage the ones who are not, but we have to make that opportunity. If you, you don't wanna poopin' on the sidewalk, you gotta give them a place to poop. And if we're locking all the bathrooms, they're gonna poop in our rivers, they're gonna poop on our sidewalks. So I'd like to spend some money, uh, less than three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and I'd like more than six toilets, but I think we can find a way to get that done. So th- there's no answer. I've got some ideas of how I'd like to mitigate those problems and I think that they're functional and I'm sure I exceeded my two minutes. That's my bandstand.
Scott.
Uh, first of all, I'm gonna say that I'm proud of Orville because uh, if you, if you're in need, if you have um, if you would like help, Orville and volunteers with so many different um, whether it's an SLE, whether it's a halfway home, whether it's a ministry in town, there's so much help available in our community. Um, that not only, not only helps our community, but we're a hub of help that helps all of our county. I, I think a lot of citizens don't even understand all that Orville does. I'll say that first. Secondly, um, when we say homeless, I think you're doing a wide brush approach to the topic because as uh, these guys have mentioned, you know, you have in my opinion, you have four different categories of people who we would consider homeless. You have those who literally, it's not a problem for them, they want to live that lifestyle. So it's, for them, it's not a homeless problem, it's just their choice. Um, and then you have those who are, are addicted to drugs. And uh, I saw one article that came out not too long ago that said it's not a homeless epidemic, it really is a drug epidemic. There's so many uh, those in the street too, who are just addicted to drugs and some of them aren't even homeless, some of them have homes to go to, but they are living out there for a time period so they can do their drugs because their family or the community they live at is not allowing them to do them in the home. So they're out there in the trees and the camps, uh, doing their drugs out there. So that's the second category. Then you have the third category, which are those that are really just down on their luck. And um, uh, again, I'm just proud of Orville because if you are down, there's a lot of opportunities, a lot of people who care and wanna be there to help. So and then last, last category of the four is those who are um, mentally just need to be in care facilities. Uh, and then that goes to our, our state, really that state, I believe our state's backwards on how to handle it. If you look at the major cities, you look at San Francisco, you look at Sacramento, you look at LA. You look at how those have been managed and what those places have been turned into, it's really sad to me. Um, and so as a, as a community, what can we do within the laws of the state of California? Uh, well, for me, the, what I have been doing and what I'll continue to do if I, if I'm elected is again, is providing, prioritizing families and businesses. I've got the joke or the the fly, the pet's fly. Um, whether, not that I'm pet, he's, he's amazing, I'm not pet, anyway. Um, so going back to the, so for our community, what do you do in the state of California in a, in a town that is uh, that has to follow or, or is limited? Um, so at that place, at least making it, if you're wanting to cause problems in town because not all homeless wanna cause problems. You know, not every homeless person is vandalizing, not every homeless person is is disturbing the peace or screaming at the sky or intimidating the mom with her kid in a stroller. You know, there are those that are out there that really do, they don't tear, not all of them tear up and so tear up communities or tear up, you know, where they live. So, but those that cause problem, those who, who vandalize, those who um, you know, set up camps and destroy properties. With those, uh, what we've started and I really, I'll say it again because it's a, I, I believe it's an amazing thing that Chief Deale and our city council has done is establish our police, problem-oriented policing. And uh, they've done, been so successful that our jail has been complaining about how many people we're bringing to there. Whereas before, it's, we haven't had the resources to, to uh, at least try to mitigate it. Um, whereas before it was, we're only, we only have enough officers to go after the problems, the, the, the top priorities, the, the call that's happening right now. Um, now we have a team that will continue to be developed, continue to grow, that includes our code enforcement, our police and municipal law enforcement that specifically go after those in town and they, they show up to these illegal encampments and they say, you have two options. Clean up your stuff and go, or you're going to jail. And so that's And so that's a part of the reason why we've taken so many. You've seen down in Montgomery in seventy, now all that's been cleared out, a lot of the area that usually be, used to be very much a great spot for people to camp has been cleared out. So just continually moving forward, clearing up the blighted areas, uh, blighted homes. And uh just doing our part as a community that if you want to live here and cause problems, then we're going to make it very uncomfortable for you to be here. If you are down on your luck and you need help, we have resources for you to help you up and out. But you, you gotta have that hard line and some people have called me heartless and whatever, you can call me heartless. But, you know, you gotta be compassionate towards those who are down and out. But you also have to prioritize um our families and our businesses. So, that's five minutes.
Thank you for that super heavy question, Jim. I have a much lighter question now. If, let's start with Scott this time. If you receive a million dollar grant from Governor Newsom to use for the city of Orville in, in any way you wanted, what would you choose and why? And I just want you to know that investing it with a local financial advisor is a perfectly fine answer.
Thank you. My first reaction when you said that was to send it back. Yeah, you know, the um, number one, our, our city, you know, when I first came in, our city had a one point eight million dol- million dollar deficit. And now after four years, we have a six point four million dollar surplus. Um, I, I'm, you know, California is not in a great place financially. So, uh, I think it's, I, it kind of just, my stomach is turned both federally and state, how much money is given out. And um, it's really just a million dollars taken, gosh, if I can shoot that fly. We have a, we have a fly assault gun at home. And it's so, so empowering to shoot those things, so awesome. Um, so what will we do with a million dollars? Well, I would, I would love to see more money invested in the uh quality of life for our citizens. Um, you know, I'm, I'm the chair on the SBF and there's, now that money's kind of just run out right now. But the great things that were done, even the marquee for the stage, for the um state theater, things like that, that really just kind of bring life to our community. So, um, I wouldn't just make the idea myself and do something. But there's a lot of cool things that can be done in town to improve, especially if there's no strings attached. If there's any strings whatsoever attached, just send it back. We're doing fine just on our own without, you know, your strings that you want to bring into our community. Um, but I would love to hear, uh, those are the cool, cool things that you can bring the community together and begin to dream. Reading recently did something our friends put together, uh, where they had, uh, I think they only had two hundred thousand dollars to spend, but they gathered the community together, they grabbed, gathered business owners and an artist together and said, okay, we want you to pitch ideas to us that is, you know, cool, whether it's art, whether it's, you know, they did one place where it was just a whole street of umbrellas, all these different color umbrellas. And just ideas or whether it be an amphitheater, things that we could do that would bring the community together, we could dream together. And then together, do something for the community that would improve the quality of lifestyle. I think it'd be great, uh, and some people would say it might be throwing money away. You can always give it towards uh homeless or whatnot. And there are a lot, again, there's a lot of resources in that right now. But doing something that would, that would encourage the community, that would encourage business, that would encourage art, artistic expression, that would benefit everybody, I think would be a great idea, so.
So, not invested. Chrissy, you get a chip for a million, what are you going to do with it?
The first thing I would do would be buy a few extra fly guns uh for Scott.
Thank you.
Et cetera. Actually, I was passing out flyers and some, I approached somebody and they were dealing with a fly issue. And they said, we'll vote for you if you get rid of the fly problem. And I recommended the fly guns because it makes it way more fun. Alright, so, all joking aside, I would split it in two ways. First, uh, so let's say half and half for the sake of being easy. Uh, in helping our local businesses transition with COVID and the loss of economic um stimulus over the past few months. So, injecting funds, I know that the county did some, which is based on a lottery system. I think that that doesn't recognize our very hardworking individual businesses who have um, who have really worked very hard, busted their bums in order to uh sustain their business, support their employees and their families through these difficult times. So, I'd put some money aside to directly um give to and grant to local businesses. The second half is not at all glamorous. Um, it would be funds towards our sewer tr- treatment plant. That is something that um is a handicap for our community. We can't bring in large industry because we don't have the influx. Thanks for all the knowledge on the sewer treatments, uh Chuck. Uh, we don't have the capacity to deal with the influx of waste management. So, that would be something uh that I would invest in as well, even though it's not very fun. But it uncaps resources for us over the long run. It is an investment in a non-traditional way.
Brian, you want to give it a shot?
I'd love to. First off, I'd invest it with uh local investment advisors to make it grow. Because a million dollars is an effective amount to, to do all the things that need to be done. Uh, then after we grew it to a pile that was appropriate for the needs in seven or eight hundred years, uh, I'd use it to apply, you know, the, the politically correct thing is you'd ask everybody and get their opinion and, and do what everyone wants to do. But I'm assuming you want to know what I would do if I were given the money and said, Brian fixes problem. Uh, here's a million dollars towards mitigating those issues. So, again, this is my soapbox, but if those toilets are fifty thousand dollars apiece, um, I'm going to replace some of the ones that we have now that uh we can't effectively manage and keep them open where citizens can use them. Uh, both taxpaying and non-taxpaying citizens. So, if we could replace some of the public toilets that we have now, we could probably hook them up to the sewer system and stuff cheaper than if we were trying to place six new ones somewhere else. So, first off, I'm going to take a, a quarter of that money and buy ten of those toilets and, and put them in strategic locations uh throughout the community. And then, I was thinking about this, it, it, I was looking over your shoulder earlier when I was standing there and I saw that question. I saw my name was on it and I'm like, oh, I got a heads up on these guys. I was hoping you'd ask me first. But I didn't take notes, but I did think about it a little bit. And, you know, one of the things I talked about in an interview or a forum or something we did earlier this month was talked about that South Orville uh hasn't got the things that they thought they would get for becoming annexed into the city. I think that was bad management. We should have made the county fix some of those things before we took it, uh, but we didn't. So, we can't build roads, I've only got seven hundred fifty thousand dollars left. Um, I think we could probably put some curbs and gutters in a few places to keep the runoff from going where it needs to be and get it into our storm drains. But I think with seven hundred fifty thousand dollars and the Measure U money that would allow us to get code enforcement up to a hundred percent staffing instead of twenty percent staffing, if we cleaned up all those blighted empty lots. And uh, you know, early on, Chuck was saying, we, we don't have the money to clean those up and put a lien against the property owner against the sale. We don't have the money to clean it up. If we did, we could clean it up, put a lien against it. And then we could either take a lien and get it back from the property owner or when they sell it, we could recoup our costs. So I'd like to take the other three quarters of a million dollars and invest it in South Orville and clean up all those blighted properties. Uh, get them all cleaned up, emptied out, spend the rest on curbs and gutters and apply liens to all those property owners. So at least it's safe for the children in that neighborhood to play and to walk back and forth to school. Thank you.
Alright, Larry, who is one of our largest property owners, is going to ask the next question.
Thanks. So, Chrissy, everybody knows cow water's a problem. They're taking huge advantage of the citizens in their district.
Your microphone's not working, Larry?
It's not working? Anyway, they're taking huge advantage of the citizens. I have facilities on Montgomery Street that pay seven to eight times the water rates of what I have on Grand Avenue. What would you do about this?
So the question was about cow water and cow water rate increases, in case you missed the first part. Um, I know that we've already done a survey to figure out why cow water is so much more expensive in our, you know, we're paying more uh in Orville than say Chico is. They attribute that to old infrastructure. So again, we're at the infrastructure issues. Um, I would love a lawn like Brian's lawn, we talk about this often. And can't have it, it's in, it's impacting our property values, it's impacting our businesses for sure. So, I think that we as a community need to um leverage our influence in order to put pressure on cow water and to make the improvements that they need to make in order to give us a fair water um rate. We have three other, oh no, two other, I know of two other water opportunities in Orville, South Feather and then Thermolito, that have significantly lower water rates. Um, we need to look at what we can do in addition to support those entities, to help them uh create more infrastructure and reach more people in our community.
Thank you. I can tell you, there is a business in downtown Orville that spends a million dollars of your own water in cow water. And if they can get out of here, they would.
Yeah, even our parks are looking at the city parks. So we spend, I think it was four thousand dollars to water a month, to water the uh on and off ramp on Montgomery Street. So, in a part of the Parks Department, what we're doing is looking at installing wells. You know, you guys can still install wells apparently. So, installing wells in order to irrigate uh public spaces, which would drive down costs for the community. Uh, if I had the space in my yard, I'd probably do it and, and the money, of course.
All the historic buildings downtown add wells, you can reopen those wells. Yes. I'll pass my.
Let's do it.
We put one in here. We put a well in here. Because of cow water.
Yeah, and thank you. It's the most beautiful lawn around.
How have you already been serving your community and for how long? Can I start this one off with Brian Flicker?
Well, I'd like to say I've been serving my community all my life because I've been a taxpaying, hardworking citizen since I was fourteen years old. So, uh, I've done my share. I think I served our community in my choice of employment, but my choice of employment wasn't with the idea of serving my community. It was taking care of my family. It was a good job, had benefits in retirement and had two young children, uh, that was important to me. So, while I did perform a service, it was a selfish beginning to that service. Since I retired, uh, I've been almost full-time doing service to my community. So for the last six or seven years, that's been my job. Uh, I, I'm amazed sometimes I'm so busy doing things, I'm, I said, how do I ever have time to work? I don't, you know, but it's a change of priorities. So, now I have the time and now I get back. But uh, I've been concerned and involved in making my community, commit, community a better place for most of my life. But actively volunteering, uh, just the last six or seven years.
And for Chrissy?
Are you going to time this one?
Oh, I'm timing it right now.
Alright. Uh, my current roles are, as I've mentioned earlier, I'm the executive director of the nonprofit, The Axiom. I've done that for nine years. Before that, I worked for Duke County Behavioral Health, uh, running prevention programs through behavioral health. I've, I am also currently the chairperson of the Parks Commission uh for the city of Orville. I'm a treasurer of the Downtown Orville Business Association, a board member for the Optimist Club. I was trying to work on my optimism, so I joined the Optimist Club. I think it's helped. We'll see. Um, eh, so those are some of my current roles. Of course, I also create opportunities for our community members to engage in service uh events, like as I mentioned in my opening statement. My, some of my past roles are kind of unique. Uh, I've served on the grand jury, providing oversight and evaluation for our local government, which was something that was so uh interesting to get to look, uh, really look at each part of our government in unique ways. Um, I served also, this is a long time ago, when I was um, just a kid. But I served on the Mental Health Services Act Steering Committee, the first one for Duke County. So that's a fund that services um the mental health services, of course. So what that does is it created funding for the African American Family Cultural Center, for the um Mong Cultural Center, through cri- for crisis response teams, and then other wraparound services for people experiencing mental health crisis. So, I was on the first steering committee that really got to lay the groundwork for multiple um organizations and programs throughout our whole county. Uh, oddly enough, I also helped was a part of the um, the group that I attended many meetings as a teenager to um transition the South Side Annex. So I didn't live in South Side, but I did work in South Side, part of my job in um, with the county was I worked on uh the corner of Spencer and B, which is where the African American Family Cultural Center is. So during my time there, I helped facilitate and talk through the community, strategizing, community organizing of, including South Side in our community. So, um, I am on the younger side, if you didn't notice. But I'll be quite frank that I've been very busy in supporting and encouraging our community and serving this community. So much so that my husband is uh at times annoyed with the level of community events we go to. But he's an awesome, awesome man and very supportive.
Time.
Perfect.
How much time do we get?
I'll tell you.
Oh wow. Time's up. Alright, I'll pass this on. So.
Do I need to turn the mistress off? Is it giving two boys?
How many, how many questions you got left? A lot? Last one? Yeah.
Yeah?
I don't know, wait, two buckets of water?
That's why. We'll let Scott talk.
And so, yeah, those are all the ways that I've been involved in the community. Uh, yeah, I could. It's, it's difficult for me on some of this stuff because um, I think it goes across my uh cross grains a little bit of my uh Christian to boast all the stuff I'm a part of. Let's just say there's a lot of volunteer opportunities that uh, that myself and my family, including my boys, uh, are, are doing, whether it's on uh a official capacity or not. Um, there's a lot of ways and a lot of opportunities in town to help. Um, officially, I'll just mention a few of those, obviously as a pastor. Um, you know, a lot of, a lot of people just kind of push churches off to the side. And yeah, there might be churches that aren't very uh engaged or, or helping. But, you know, families are the seatbed to the community. If, if there's a lot of turmoil within families, if, if uh marriages are being torn apart, if kids are being led in the wrong direction, um, then, you know, if there, if there's not the help and the guidance and the, the resources that are there for them to get on the right path and stay out of trouble. Um, you know, nonprofits, charity organizations do a, a lot of stuff that people just don't see and understand. So obviously that is a, a front burner um thing for me, not only to do it personally, but to um, I'm, I'm grateful to hire more staff, you know, the church, we have our youth pastor now. And so, and that's growing, that's, that's awesome. So I can just, left to just brag on that, you know, to see the increased amount of kids that are coming around. And you can tell when you go in there, these kids are from troubled backgrounds. And they're not really, uh, for whatever reason, uh, the issues of depression, issues of frustration, issues of anger and the issues of just, you know, maybe a lack of parenting at home and looking for a father role, looking for a mother role, looking for somebody to come around them and encourage them, uh, to speak identity into them. So anyway, all that goes into that, I'll just say, oh, I'd brush that, all that goes into that, uh, serving, but also on city council here. So, that goes with the decisions of uh sewer decisions or uh supplemental benefits fund decisions that uh increase the, the, you know, whether it's helping the larken pool or the s- stage, uh lighting, again, that all kind of boast on, all the different opportunities that are there as the city councilman, uh, to help the city. So, um, I don't even know, I can't, anyway, there's a lot of, lot of things that uh do on both those roles, both on official capacity and non-official capacity, just to, to help and serve and to speak identity into people and the community. On top of that, I'm just going to boast and say, as well, trying to encourage others that are really qualified to step up and to run for city council. These aren't the only, you know, I, I think Brian made his own decision, but um, but I know that when he said he'd run, like, I ran up to him like, let me know if you need help, you know? Um, I'm constantly trying to, you know, if somebody I, I see, and even with the Mong and Mean community, there's amazing people that are there that I've been trying to rally and encourage to step up because I believe that their voice needs to be heard on council as well. So, I'm definitely an advocate for people who have sound principles, uh, conservative values, business sense to step up and represent our city. Because I still don't have a strong political aspiration. I got a lot of things that I want to do, but I, but definitely impertinent to see our community move forward and be in good hands. That I want to do, but I definitely impertinent to see our community move forward and be in good hands to not see Oroville continue to go in the cycle. Of uh, you know, almost breaking out then, no, we're gonna make horrible decisions and go right back around this mountain. So I'm grateful and I'm I'm encouraged by the direction that our city is going. And so being an advocate for um people to step up and. To maybe show them, hey, listen, a knucklehead like me can do it, so you can do it too. So.
Okay, uh our final question with five minutes uh for each candidate to answer. What makes you stand out from the other candidates running? And why should city uh residents vote for you? We'll start with Chrissy.
So will this also be our closing statements? Yeah?
What do you think, Stephanie?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, it's a consensus. So. And the, to wrap up, why? Say it again? Sorry.
That's okay. What what makes you stand out from the other candidates running and why should people vote for you?
Okay. Um, well, one thing that makes the three of us stand out is that we're here. In front of you today. Which shows that we're willing to uh forego. Our Saturday nights with our friends, with our families um. And make sure that our community gets to make well-informed decisions based on our principles and our values. Um which is what I want for our community. So to start, I've ran a campaign that is very open and transparent. I feel like a. I mean, I I'm doing a lot out there to just get people to sit down and talk and share what their experiences. Um, so that I can be a representative for them in whether I'm on council or not. Um. And so I'm really honored by the amount of support that I've really received from. Uh a wide range of community members. And that's something that I want to continue to honor. Uh it's something that. Part of my personality is that I like to um. I like to come to agreements that are. That are reasonable and that are balanced and that are really looking at the best choice for our community. And uh I don't enter into this uh. Campaign or into possibly into council with some sort of crazy agenda. My agenda is to support what's already happening and add. Energy um and add a little bit of freshness to that. So that's kind of some of my uh perspective. Uh another thing that I think is really valuable is that I have three priorities. And that's to improve quality of life. That's to enhance our natural resources and community strengths and to support our small business. And when I set out to create what my platform was or what my priorities were, it was really easy for me because it's things that I'm already doing. It's um networks that I've already developed and it makes me a, it puts me in a position where I could enter onto council and on day one be an effective team member. Think also the fact that I've spent time developing relationships with all types of people, even those that I don't agree with. Um. And creating trusting relationships is something that is really valuable. Previous councils have been filled with. Contention and drama and it's embarrassing for all of us. So I really hope that as a council member, I can be somebody who's bringing reason. Logic and um encouragement to our other community leaders.
And you think that makes you stand out from us?
Not, not from you, but quite possibly from some others.
You have two minutes, keep going.
Alright, two minutes, keep going. Alright, uh that's great. I think another thing that's really important to note. Is that I, it's no surprise that I'm also younger. Like I said earlier, that allows me to bring a little bit of different perspective. Um. As far as like my experience with technology or with business, things like that. My experience is just a little bit different. Not to say that our older experience isn't valued, it is. Uh but we need a difference of perspectives in all things in order to make well-informed decisions for our community. So. I have a lot of respect for our current council members uh of all age brackets and our leadership of all age brackets. I just want to make sure that we are also reflecting new ideas and new um concepts that sometimes might get overlooked. Um. Man, you gave me two more minutes and I kinda lost it.
You can invest some of it for future needs.
Marty used it earlier.
Like I said, uh I'm running a very open campaign. And so I would love if you still have, if there was a question that you wanted to get to know. And you wanted to talk to me about or all of us about, I just invite you to attend one of my meet and greets. I'll be here tomorrow. Uh any excuse to hang out outdoors I'm up for. So I'll be here tomorrow from four thirty to six. You're welcome to meet me here. I'm also gonna do a meet and greet next Monday uh or no, next Saturday at Mug Shots. I welcome you to attend that too. I think that being able to get to know the. Wide variety of community members is something that is really valuable. And it's something that people ask how's campaign and going. I'm like, I love it. And I love it because I get to meet Karen, community members like yourself. So I just encourage you guys to um to reach out. To ask questions and um to, so don't be shy. We're we're here because we all love Oroville. We want to see what's best for our community. Ah, I filled my time. Thanks, Stephanie.
I got so entrenched in what she was saying, I was not paying attention to the time anymore. So I finally just gave up on her, I think. Uh, I'm I'm kind of offended. I've I've heard several of our candidates and and. I don't mean to offend you, Chrissy, but I don't think it's fair to say that because I'm fifty-eight years old. That I don't understand what's important to a twenty-five-year-old. Uh I I've lived there. I've been a twenty-five-year-old. I'm not so old that I don't know. What is important to that. Genre or generation. Uh and I'm not talking about you, um but the uh another candidate is saying that. They need to be on the, they want to bring diversity to the board. Well, I don't think the fact that I'm white doesn't means I don't understand the needs of other peoples. Uh I I lived in communities where I was the minority in Walla Walla, Washington, when I was picking fruit uh with with uh. Mexican nationals, legal or illegal, coming up in there. Uh I I grew up in South Oroville and in uh. My graduating class, over a third of them were black and they were good friends of mine. Uh my son's best friend all through high school was was a black man. Uh, I don't see color when I'm looking at people. I don't think I need to be Mexican or black or Asian to understand the things that they're going through. I think the fact that I've been a minority in my community helps me understand some of those things. Uh, but I think the important thing is to be open and receptive to people's needs. Uh, I may not understand your needs personally, uh but I don't think it's because you're black or because you're Mexican or because you're Asian. Uh I think all of our needs are specific to individuals. And I feel I can represent any nationality, creed, color, uh. Just because I'm a fifty-eight-year-old white man doesn't mean I don't understand. And that I'm not willing to listen to you and understand your concerns. My job as a city councilman is to represent all the constituents of Oroville. And until we get the districting done in two years, uh that's my job and I will do the job that's expected of me. Uh, every position I've ever held in my life, I did what was expected of me. Uh, I I like to have clear goals. I like to know what's expected of me, uh and then I will perform those things. If you don't give me goals. Uh give me the latitude to do it. If you elect me, I think you're giving me the latitude to represent. You some ways. I think it's incumbent upon me to understand what your needs and wants are and related to the community. Uh but I don't need to be twenty-five-year-old Hispanic male to understand the twenty-five-year-old Hispanic. Male's needs from the city council of Oroville. So, uh, I. As I said earlier, initially, I had no interest in being a politician. I don't want to be one. Uh, I'm doing it for the same reason I became a sergeant and the same reason I became a lieutenant. Because I couldn't stand some idiot telling me what to do. So if you're in charge of me and I don't like it, then it's incumbent on me to uh replace you. And I told the three members of the, four members of the city council two years ago. Uh I'll be back in two years. I'm back and. Now two, well, one of those people stepped out. Another one got beat last time and he's trying again. Uh you can't win as an incumbent. I don't think you're gonna win as a, an open candidate. Uh. And Jack Berry said something at one of the first forums I ever went to. Two and a half, three years ago. And he said, I'd tell you right now, if there's a better man than me running, I'd step down. Well, Jack, there's a better man than you running right now. Um, and if anybody else wants this job, step up, you can have it. I don't want to be a city councilman. Uh I want my city to be a better place and I want the citizens of this community. To have representation and a voice on the council. And I promise you, I will do that and I am capable.
First of all, I want to say thank you to this face, for this face diaper.
It was supposed to be hiding you.
Right? So, uh the thing that runs through my mind is city council. If you see me up there smiling, just, you know, there's some joke running through my mind. Anyway. So what makes me stand out as a city council member? Well, um, let me start by sharing a few things that I'm proud of that maybe share. Uh part of what I've done, where I've been at in the last four years of those. Uh came in, there was a one point eight million dollar deficit as part of the team that fixed that and got us soluble. And then from there. After uh four years of being on city council, the fact that we have a four point, six point four million dollar surplus. I believe is some kind of testament to uh management and things that have changed around in our city. Um, also the formation of the pop team, that being a priority. Me not only saying what I um am for, but also following that up. I get really frustrated uh when people communicate what they're for. And then actually when they're given power, they aboutface and they run for personal agendas. And uh I've personally seen that and um that is not who I am. I'm. I tell people right off the gate, hey, listen, I'm for family, business, public safety, fiscal responsibility. If you see me operating otherwise, come talk to me. But my, if you're, if you're electing me, those are the values that I make my decisions that are based on. Those four values. And so if those are your values, then a vote for me, the last four years shows my track record. That continues on with those four values. Um, also, I'm really proud of the vibe downtown, the change with not only amazing places like this. With the Barbers and uh, you know, the Purple Line Winery or whether it's the stage or whether it's. Uh the Union or or what, all the, the inn and all the different changes that have happened in the last four years. Um, I'm really proud of that and the change that's happened between the relationship between our public and private sector. I'm really proud of being part of strategic, integral part of the team that stopped the MG Five from making Oroville a marijuana mecca. So um I'm really proud of of that. I'm really, thanks, really proud of. Uh our city and our staff cleaning up the illegal blighted homes. And so I promise you that if I'm elected, I will continue. To listen to our constituents and I will continue to listen to our other council members. I will continue to make decisions with the next generation in mind. I will continue to be an advocate for business and growth. I will continue to seek out opportunities for development. And uh finally, I'm just gonna quote, finish a quote by William J. H. Bodker, which died in sixty-four. He said, "You cannot strengthen the weak by weakening the strong. You cannot establish sound security on borrowed money. You cannot further the brotherhood of men by inciting class hatred. You cannot keep out trouble by spending more than you earn. And you cannot build character and courage by destroying men's initiative and independence." So. As an individual, I am a freedom-loving. I am uh believing in our God-given rights. I believe in the government, which our forefathers established. And I believe that their mind was for. A minimalist government that got out of the way. And so um if you want those things, then those are things I stand for, have stood for, and will continue to stand for. As a representative for Oroville. So. That's who I am.
I'd like to call on our mayor, Chuck Reynolds.
While he's on the way, I want to say something. Um, Brian, if I offended you, I am so sorry. It's. Not, I absolutely value the role that uh you bring and other members bring to our council. I know that sometimes that doesn't come out in the way I say things. Uh it's. Something I promise to continue to work on, but I absolutely respect you and apologize if what I've said has um offended you or hurt you in any way.
No, I I don't think it was you.
Okay.
Um, you you mentioned, and that reminded me that, you know, that's. Uh Mr. O'Reilly's running on that, you know, it's important that we get some youth on this thing and. Uh get rid of some of these older people because young people need to do it. So you 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 said that, it made me. Think about, it's not one of your campaign things, it's one of his. And uh, but I I'm just offended. By anyone in general that says, I'm not in a position to do what I say I'm in a position to do. So. I said, it wasn't personal and I didn't think it was personal when you said that. It just reminded me one that did.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Can I add, can I, can I just jump on that as well? The reason why I was laughing when this was going on because. The Reagan quote popped in my mind when his age was. Uh a point of contention when he was running and the other man was was younger than him. And he said, I don't want to make age. Uh a factor in this, in this race. And so I I don't want to capitalize on the youth or inexperience of my. My opponent. So anyway, those kind of things, as people talk, go through my mind. So anyway. Chuck. Mayor Chuck Reynolds.
Wow, well, I I think these three were great and uh just, just absolutely amazing. Uh, you know, I I would like to encourage. All of us to, we we have a responsibility to uh. To pay attention to what's going on in our community. And and I will tell you, when I got. Involved or was asked to start paying attention, uh well, it's been two and a half years now. I couldn't believe it when I went to a city council meeting. What, what a embarrassment. And uh, and you had two people on a council of seven who had genuine hearts for the city. And then you had chaos. And it was so frustrating because, and and that's where I want to call you to be responsible is because. We need to be really, really careful of who we vote for. Because uh. It might seem like small-town city council to you, but I don't think that people realize how much power is in those seats. It's the way you are going to live. That's how you're voting. We had a group of five a couple of years ago that tried to change the whole landscape of this community. And some of us stood up and said, no. I know that when I stood up and. And begged them to make the decision to not do what they were going to do. One of them said, or what? I couldn't believe it. I, my, I'm multi-generation family here. I mean, we, we. Have worked hard all our lives. We, I, and from our city council, this is what I got? Or what? And it just. I, the, the country boy in me said, oh, I didn't, I, in my heart, I'm going, I didn't know you wanted to fight. But okay. But what came out was, or. I'll tell you, or what? Or we're coming for those seats. That's or what? And this council member laughed at me. She said, what do you got, a magic wand? Yes, it's under that seat. And when you get out of it, I can reach it. But, but what I'm saying is, it just felt so helpless. When they had all the power and they weren't willing to represent all of us. I ran for mayor to represent everyone. I, there, there isn't a phone call or someone that uh that approaches me in a restaurant or that, that. When they approach me respectfully, I guarantee you, we can have a good conversation. And they will get a good answer. If I'm approached disrespectfully, then then that country boy thing will come back. But we all want respect, right? We all want to be treated, just because we get elected to office. Don't mean that we have to be a doormat. And I will tell you that those pushing certain agendas. Think that that's what your position is. I have, my hat's off to these three uh candidates that that are up here in A. I've known. All of them for years, working throughout the community with them. And and they are exceptional people. And I, I just want you to know what what my ballot looks like. It looks, it says Scott Thompson, Brian Flicker, and Chrissy Riggs. Because these. These are the people that I think that I can work best with for the community. Not saying that the other ones don't, don't have a good heart, but I have. Not saying that the other ones don't, don't have a good heart, but I, how, how do we know? They're not here to ask. So I, and you know what? I, maybe we should lift them all up in prayer. I don't know what kind of emergencies all of them might have had. Who, who, I hope that their health is okay and that, that there wasn't some, something that kept them from being here tonight. I, on a serious note, we, we don't really know why they're not here. We just know that they're not. And so if we can, just a, just a silent prayer for them. But, but like I said, the, these three I've worked with, they, they are, are tried and tested for this community. They have no personal agenda or secret agenda. I know, I guarantee you, I wouldn't put my name on a ballot with, with them on it if they did. That is the kind of tyranny that we're fighting. That, at that one council meeting two and a half years ago, when I was told by the powers that be, or what? Well, this is or what? This is what happens when, when you try and, and control a people who, who just want to be left alone and stand up for what's good and what's right. A safe community, to raise your families in, to be safe for one another. And, and I will tell you, having been on the inside of, of all of these things now, all of these special agendas going on, it's all funding-based. If we can get money, let's get money here, let's get. But I'm telling you what, there is a good team at that city hall now. There is a good, solid group who are all working together. You didn't have that before. When I, the first time I walked through that city hall, it was like walking through an abandoned building. There were three people in those meetings when I first started, me, Bill Legrone, and Tom Lando. And we were figuring out what we were going to do. But thank God we had a council that, that was sensible and willing to work for the community, not worried about what they could get for their particular group. These three, in my heart and in my mind, I know will serve you the best. And I endorse all three of them. Thank you.
I think we're going to close out the formal part of this and give the candidates the opportunity to meet and greet and perhaps answer any questions that they might have on particular issues facing the city. I'd like to thank Trent, Larry, and Gerald, the fellow moderators tonight. Thank you Purple Line for your hospitality tonight. And thank you one and all for coming. And please vote. Thank you.
I'm going to say just one thing, oh, two things. Thanks for coming. We love seeing you guys here. We are a part of this community and we support everybody who works in this community and wants to work in this community. Joe's Food Truck is going to be here for another hour or so. So if you want to meet and greet, have a glass of wine, help Joe out a little bit, thanks for coming.